Motion to command executive session, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
All's favor. First on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance.
We pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Why I'm nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Presentations Chief Lash, you'd like to step up to the fore.
Good evening, everyone. So I was invited here tonight. Basically, just talk about some trends that we're seeing and talk about some issues we're having and to educate the public a little bit about some things. Cause I think education, I think it's time for education. We tried everything else. And so we're gonna try the education piece. First, I wanna pitch that we're looking for qualified applicants. So if anybody knows anyone who's qualified and I think could has a little bit of crazy in them, so you could do this job, it'd be great. We'd use them. So first off, I wanna start off by saying we are out there doing things. It's a big town. And a lot of people don't see what we're doing. They don't see us. There was some chatter lately that we don't do anything. And I've got fifteen thousand calls in the year twenty twenty-three. That says that we are doing things. So if anybody has questions, please come see me in my office and we can go over what we're doing for calls and yes, just wanna get that out of the way first. Secondly, we're seeing the effects of some liberal policies take a major effect, especially when it comes to the drug issue, drug problem. We had an incident a couple of weeks ago that didn't open our eyes because we're aware of it. But when we may have known what happened, it opened a lot of other people's eyes who didn't understand exactly what was going on in this town with the drug problem. So they thought it would be good for me to share what we're seeing so the public understands. So the latest trends that we're seeing is what's happening is gangs from out of state are taking advantage of our local addicts. So what they're doing is somehow these people are becoming acquaintances, whether it's the addicts are going down there, buying drugs and then coming back. But what happens is some of these gang members get some heat on them locally, whether it's from other gangs in New York or from the police in New York. So they'll send members of these gangs up here to Maine to set up shop. And what they'll do is they'll go to these addicts' house and they'll say, hey, I'll give you fix today if I can sleep on your couch. Well, then it turns into their their addiction, it becomes more than sleeping on the couch. How about I'll take your bedroom, you sleep on the couch because you owe me this much money. And then it's, okay, I'm gonna sleep with your girlfriend, excuse me, I'm gonna sleep with your girlfriend to pay for your fix. And so that's where this human trafficking piece comes into. So the drug trafficking is not only bringing drug trafficking, but it's bringing sex trafficking, human trafficking. It's happening here at Waldaborough. And I think it shocked some people when we, when we told them what was happening. They didn't realize it was here. It's everywhere, but it's here in Waldaborough. And the reason why I say the liberal policies have led to this is what we're finding is the old way we used to do things is we would arrest people on possession charges. And these possession charges were felonies. And so it was easy to get people to flip. It was easy for people to get to buy. So basically getting the little fish in order to get the big fish. What's happened is these crimes have been decriminalized. So heroin possession or fentanyl possession or cocaine possession used to be a felony. Now it's a misdemeanor. Also, with all the use of deferred dispositions, you may get charged with a felony, but if you behave for six months, it'll be a, it'll be a misdemeanor. So what's happened is the little fish that we used to use for these bigger drug cases are now they know they're just gonna get slapped on the wrist, so they won't flip. They're not, they're not willing to work with us because they know they're not gonna, nobody's being held accountable. So I just wanted to educate people, let people know what's going on out there in the drug world and the problems we're seeing. Because of some of these liberal policies. Are there any questions about any of that stuff? I know it's kind of a lot. It's heavy, it's heavy.
So the people who are using are victims of, of their addiction. So we have people now who come in and prey upon that addiction.
Correct.
Part of, so part of my issue is how do we, and I know you don't have the answer to this because you and I have spoken about this numerous times, but we need treatment for people who are addicted to drugs.
The, the underlying problem is drug addicts. So if we don't have drug addiction, we don't have drug addicts. We don't need drug dealers, right? There's no reason for them to be here. We don't have drug addicts. How do we help the addicts? How do we get them better? Well, first of all, let's hold them accountable. When, when we saw success with addicts is when they had a bail condition or they were on probation, they had to check in every day or every week. That's when they were getting better.
So you've seen that trip?
We've seen that after, when COVID happened and we were having these groups where people were coming in these groups, they had to come to these groups sober. They weren't sober when they came to these groups. They went back to jail or they got a probation violation. We're just, we're not seeing that now.
So one of the things that we need to be loud about, I would say, is we need treatment. So I guess one of the things that we, that, that the, the town folks, whether they're residents or select board or we need to be vocal about needing better facilities and better options for people.
And, and Narcan isn't treatment. That's what this state's pushing right now. Just give everybody Narcan, put Narcan in everybody's house. Yeah, it's great. You can, you can save a loved one. But Narcan is not the fix. It fixes them immediately. We need to like get them long-term treatment. That's, that's
That's the goal.
That's the underlying problem.
Is we need long-term treatment for the people who are addicted.
And, and, and some of that, you, you, you can't forget that accountability piece. I mean, we need to hold these people accountable while they're getting better because they can't do it on their own.
Lash, how, how widespread would you, I know you hard to get solid numbers, but how widespread do you think this problem is in Waldaborough? Just, just the town of Waldaborough?
I would guarantee you that ninety percent of families are affected by it one way or the other. I bet you, you poll any random family you come across in town, they're gonna say somebody in their family is affected by it.
You mean they're, they're a drug addict? Some of these non-convictions pled down potentially caused someone to potentially get violent afterwards as far as
So, yeah, so
Does it progress?
So the problem I see with, with, so deferred dispositions are awesome for first-time offenders, right? You made a mistake. You, you did something that you normally wouldn't do. So for those who don't understand deferred disposition, basically I charge you with a felony. And I charge you for stealing over three thousand dollars of the stuff because you were down in your locker, so you get a felony. But if you can behave and you can follow these conditions, this deferred disposition, you follow these conditions for six months, a year, two years or whatever. When you're, if you end on good terms and you haven't messed up since then, we'll drop this down to a misdemeanor. So you don't have a felony record. So that's deferred disposition. But the problem comes is when they're doing deferred dispositions over and over and over again to people who've proven that they can't stop committing crimes. So what happens is we'll charge someone with a felony, which along with a felony comes a whole lot of things. One, dangerous people can't buy guns, right? Felony says you can't hone a gun. We wouldn't have to worry about a lot of this yellow flag stuff if people would just get charged with the felonies they were charged with originally instead of pled down over and over and over again. So yes, there are effects where that plays a huge role.
So treatment is the number one way.
It's the root cause. I mean, yeah.
Addiction is the root cause, but treatment for that would help tremendously with the root cause.
How many, how many groups were there before pre-COVID in the area that would help?
Yeah, so, so we had one big group locally and there were other groups, Damascada, Wiscasset. And some of them have gotten, have back up and running since then, but they're not the same. The, the, the people who are doing well needed that support system when COVID happened and those just disappeared. They just they had, they had no support and they just went reback in their old habits.
Had been held accountable even at the court level to mandate, maybe let them go into
During, during COVID, we couldn't even arrest people at one point.
Well, part of the issue is too, I think they had accountability at the group level.
But, but a lot of, a lot of those groups, they were court mandated to go to these groups.
That's, that's where I was getting at. If they're court mandated that they go to these groups, maybe we need to that's something we look into is pushing the district attorney to do that.
And I think, I think we have to not lose sight of the treatment aspect. The, the treatment aspect, and, and, but how, again, how do you, I, you're it's hard because how do you force somebody into treatment that doesn't wanna go? But how do they even start? That's right. It's, it's very hard. It's, I mean, obviously if
They don't wanna go to jail.
If there were simple answers, if there were simple answers to this, the world would be different than it is. My feeling, I, I felt very strongly about this is I think the residents need to know what exists in the town. And what you guys are dealing with, but also because I think if there's more people aware of what's going on, you're more likely to hear about it. So I, I, you know, and I think people do tend to wanna hide their head in the sand and say, well, you know, that might happen in a city, but it's not happening in Waldaborough. And I don't want everybody to think it just happens in Waldaborough. It's happening all over. It's not just, it's not just Waldaborough.
Yeah, no, and, and information building it is huge in these cases to build these, it takes a lot to build these cases. Information is huge. The more information, so the more people that know, the more information that comes in, yeah, we'll have to sift through it, might be, might have some you know, some more calls or whatnot, but we need the information. So that's why we're educating, hoping, hoping that the more information comes in and may maybe some of it will help, maybe some of it won't, but the more information, the better. Cause
It's always good to let people know what's going on.
And I, I know people don't necessarily always wanna call dispatch and have their name out there and they wanna make, or remain anonymous. We've got this LTIP thing, it's tip four oh one one. You can basically text this place and it will, it'll get it to, to us, the proper agency. Wherever it's happening. So anybody has it's on the sheriff's office website, but I've got a whole, I got a whole bunch of flyers in the lobby, anybody needs it.
Wanna talk about your, of your fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars?
Fifteen thousand calls? Oh, yeah. So, yeah, so probably the biggest complaint or the most frequent complaint I get is speeding complaints. They say we're not doing anything. So my guys vowed to get their traffic stops up and up over three thousand. So in twenty twenty-three, I don't have twenty twenty-four numbers yet. But twenty twenty-three, we did over three thousand traffic stops, which was tripled.
Chief, of the fifteen thousand plus calls that you folks did in twenty twenty-three, over fifteen thousand. How many of those do you think were attributable in one way or another to drug use?
So a lot of the thefts. And so under, under here, you're gonna see like police information. So a lot of the times we'll get tips and we'll get information. So I think there's almost like four hundred police information calls in here. And most of that's drug stuff. But like, it, it leads to a lot of these things. It leads to burglaries. It leads to the overdoses, the death investigations. So not all these death investigations of the thirteen death investigations we did, not all of them are overdoses, but half of them are.
Four hundred ninety-nine erratic operations.
Yep.
By reading.
Uh, that, that could, that could be anything. Since the invent of cell phones, you get somebody that passes you and you don't like it, you call an erratic operation. So those are, it's, it's hard to say. But yeah, yeah, we get a lot of erratic operations.
Would you say some of the domestic violence and the other types of violence could be?
I would say most of that is alcohol, which is an addiction. Yep, yep, play is a big part of it.
How many overdoses did we have?
You know, that is hard to say because since the advent of Narcan, we don't get called anymore. People are doing it and we're finding out about it days later. So the EMS is not getting the calls that we were anymore. Because people are just doing Narcan on their own. It's a really hard number to gauge. We, I mean, there was a point where we were getting one to two a week that we knew about and now we don't, we just don't hear about them anymore. And it's not because they're not happening. It's because actually it's Narcan.
And that might give everybody like that false sense of security. And I think one of the things too that we, I talked to John about changing a couple of weeks ago, we did is we're gonna try to get out these monthly numbers. Even if we just put them on Facebook, essentially Lincoln County. Because I think people need to, to know. So part of it is, I think you get so involved in the day-to-day and we've been short-staffed in the police department, well, since I've seven years at least.
Remember the last time we were full staffed?
Fully staffed for, I think, half a day.
Half a day, yeah.
Half a day for one day this year, uh, last year. You know, so and, and we're not as good as we should be about tooting our own horn. But I do think that that's good information to get out to the public of and, and we try to stay away from, and John and I have had this conversation numerous times. You know, saying, you know, if you look at some blog, some blog, police logs, it says, says the name and, you know, it, it's not about but I think they should know about what types of calls we have.
I know that's been a bone of contention with no police log thing. So I, I don't wanna explain that a little bit. So innocent until proven guilty, right? We're charging people that you're innocent till you're proven guilty. We've only said that we have probable, probable cause to believe that you're guilty. That's why we summons you. Wait till you see it in the court news. That's why I'm not so quick to put these things out there. That's just my own opinion.
The call numbers are important. And I would say it's not just your opinion. There's some, a lot of legal discussion about police logs too. But I do think at least putting the numbers out, it keeps people aware of what the, number one, what's going on in the town and to what the police are doing. I mean, I, I like to tell this story. I had a woman one time call up who was convinced there was a speeding dump truck. And she called nine one one because there was a speeding dump truck. And I understand speeding happens all over this town. It happens where you know, you can't go anywhere and not hear about it. But she was very angry that she had called at nine o'clock in the morning and an officer did not come. So she called again. So then she called again. It happened to be a day where we had a significant domestic disturbance and it ended up, I believe it was a state, we were actually, they were in the middle of a standoff. You know, but she felt so strongly about the speeding that she called three times and then just very angrily called me and just explained what she felt. And, and I felt compelled to share with her. I'm sorry they haven't been able to get to you. Normally you would be gotten to, but have you heard all the sirens? We're a little busy at the mo, they're a little busy at the moment. And after I explained to her, I said, you know, they're involved in this. She's like, oh, okay. Well, then she read about it a few days later. Well, she did. She called back and she goes, you know, you don't think about that when you live in the little town of Waldaborough. She goes, I just think it's a great, you know, great place. And I wouldn't even think that could happen in the town of Waldaborough. So I think that little bit of education, not that speeding isn't important because it is. But I think that little bit of education is, is useful because people sometimes just don't realize you're so involved in your own life. You don't see what's going on in everybody else's.
Yeah, no, speeding is, is very important. I mean, we had four hundred and seventy-eight crashes in twenty twenty-three. So
One thing I wanted to ask you, because we are very proud of our community navigation program here. Have you found that as the police department, have you found that resource useful?
Yes, very, very helpful resource.
A lot of times, the police department and our EMS department are the first contact we have with people who genuinely have a need. And we've tried to address that. So it's that first line. It's, they can then give that card to whoever needs it. And then the follow-up is the next step.
It's, it's great for us too because a lot of times we're just there for negative things and it's, it's a positive thing we can hand to somebody. It works out.
I'd just like to say I wanna thank you and your officers for what you do. When recently I learned of one of the calls that had to be fielded, I literally guessed at what happened. I certainly had a falling apart. And I just wanna thank you for for you and your officers in working to unravel that case. Thank you very much.
What do you have to continue to drill?
You look like you have something.
I was gonna say, are you taking public comments as well or in, in case people burst and I, do you have, do you have something?
Yeah, I have a few questions on.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, okay.
Uh, first question, are we seeing higher levels of other crimes that are tagging on to the issues that you mentioned earlier about the the drug use and trafficking?
Crimes are up across the board, I would say. Interesting thing about this particular place that we're having an issue with recently is we used to be there a lot, used to do a lot there, but since these gangs have moved in, they've told the people, we don't want the cops here anymore. So we've actually had less calls there, which made us suspicious to begin with. So without naming places, it's a, yeah, it's, it's an interesting how that turned out.
People are, so there are neighborhoods that you could say people know
Yep.
That are being visited by people who essentially people are scared.
Scared or they don't want their source of drugs to be gone.
The next, it's not really a question, it's more of a comment. This was relating to the speeding tickets that were issued. Some people don't need to know the names or who or where, but it would help to just know that three thousand tickets are issued. It might help deter so people.
Yep, just a clarification, that's not three thousand tickets, that three, it's over three thousand stops. Not everybody gets a ticket.
I'm, I'm just reading.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Uh, there was one question on the village parking enforcement and I'll just read it word for word. Why is there no parking enforcement in the village?
When I'm dealing with that's a tough one.
Well, there was parking enforcement.
There
It's on your list.
Yes. There are, we, we do deal with parking things, especially during snowstorms. That's about the only, we do write tickets here and there. Enforcing the winter parking ban. And we do have vehicles towed during the winter parking ban. However, during the day when I've got one guy on, he's busy running around taking other calls, he can't be downtown. And I, I just don't have the resources for it. I would, I don't have a parking guy. It's just the truth.
The three thousand stops, but also reporting the crashes would help again. Has the disorderly property ordinance been used to evict anyone from their homes yet? And has there been any hearing yet held under the disorderly property ordinance?
Not that I'm aware of.
Is the body camera policy that was enacted once, two years ago still the current policy?
Hmm, yeah, there's been no revisions to it, same policy.
I think that's all I have for now.
Yes, sir. Is the deferred conviction program stated when it's actually mandatory? This has, or any kind of counseling?
It, that all depends on what the sentencing is. Yeah, it's individual by individual. Yep, yep. So what I'll say about the so the, the, the state makes the laws. The, the difference we're seeing is, is the policies within individual DA's office. That's, that's where we're seeing the issues. And I'll probably get in trouble for that because I'm gonna be seen as the bad guy, it needs to be said.
Absolutely. I mean, if we're not, if we're not getting what we need done, we're just beating our heads against the wall.
I mean, we've, we've tried asking, we've tried, we've tried everything else, though. I guess we've gotta go public now.
That's why you're here tonight. I mean, we've got issues that can't seem to get resolved.
Well, we've got issues that are bigger than the town of Waldaborough.
We're, we're finally see, we're finally seeing the effect of these. And before it, it turns out to, like we're seeing out West, Seattle and places like let's try to make a change for terms of that.
I, I think that's one of the things that we have to formulate and discuss is you know, we need to ask for resources to deal with addiction. We need to be vocal when, through our state legislators about how can the town of Waldaborough, you know, we are not a big city. But we provide big city services and we have big city needs. And we need to get some of those resources directed to Waldaborough to help our people. I mean, these are our residents that are suffering from addiction. And we need to get those resources to, to the people that need them. And it's, you know, we have a amazing community navigator program. And you know, we've had, we've, you've all heard the success stories that we've had with through that office and finding help for people who've come and needed help. But this is even beyond us. But I just think we need to be vocal about what's happening and, and moving forward, how do we address it and what do we need to address it? And if that's a meeting with the DA and saying, hey, this is, this is a problem that we're facing. But it doesn't stop there. It, I think we have to be vocal about, you know, helping people. We had a, there was a email that Bob, you sent me about changes to the GA. Don't, that's general assistance program, you know. And some of that was just to me beyond what, you know, I was very opinionated about that. You know, towns don't need more GA rules and regulations. Towns need things that actually give people help that's sustaining. GA is a temporary thing. Community navigation is, can change lives. That's what we need. That's what needs to be funded. You know, so I think we need to start being very vocal with the state about what we need and
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, it just seems to me that what she described this evening is like a catch twenty-two. And it's reached the point of absurdity. And I, I kinda echo what Julie says. The powers that be, in a sense, helped to create this situation. And unforeseen results are what we're dealing with. It was, I think back in the day when they made these changes, it was kind of a panacea. Give these people a stuff that keeps them alive, focused on keeping people alive. That's great. But the focus is very narrow. That's all you're trying to do. If you're not dealing with a root problem, you're shooting yourself in the so I, I commend what you guys are doing.
Mental health services and addiction services are bravely needed in the state of Maine. We need them in the town of Waldaborough. And it's, it's, it's not something that people wanna talk about. And it's not something everybody wants to know, but it's something that people need to understand and we need to know. And as a community, face it and say, how do we fix it? And believe me, I don't have, I don't have to, you know, if, if people have the answers, there's towns all over the country that are dealing with this. We just have to be vocal about it and we need to be transparent about it.
But it also goes far as to say that what is, that does need to change is something that empowers our police officers to do their jobs the way they should be done and not having their hands tied. Tying their hands is not productive.
But I, I appreciate that the fact that But I, I appreciate that the fact that, you know, you've said this many times. I think part of some people's frustration, and I even picked up on some of it today, um, on a couple of. Social media uh posts is that, well, nothing's getting done about the drugs. You, you've said this numerous times, there's rules, you, you are governed by rules.
We, we call rule, I mean, the fourth amendment is a very important right that we all share, we all have. Um, there's certain rules we have to follow, so we don't violate those rights and follow rules.
So it's hard when somebody says, oh, well, I see this or I, I think this is happening or why aren't you doing anything?
And the criminals have smartened up to these rules. Few examples, uh, when these gangs come up here, they never drive, they use rental cars. The reason why they never drive is because we can only ID the driver. We don't have probable cause to speak to anybody else in the car, they know they don't have to give us their ID, so they've learned that. Uh, they never have drugs and money on the same person or in the same car because they've learned that if they have drugs and money, it's a trafficking, it's a, it's a. It's a sentencing thing, they get, they get a higher charge if they have both. So they've learned these little nuances to, to. To use the fourth amendment to their advantage.
But again, we have to follow and, and sometimes that's hard for people to say, well, I see it, why don't you see it?
We see it, we know what's going on. Once again, we have rules, I'm not gonna violate somebody's rights.
The fact is, we used to have a group in town that was fairly active. That dealt with addicts who were trying to deal with their issue. We don't have that. And part of the reason for that is that the system is not holding their feet to the fire. That needs to change. You need to, you need to encourage behavior that changes. The personality of the person who's having to deal with the addiction and changes the habits of the person that has the addiction. It's a hell of a thing to have to do, very, very difficult. But we're not doing that anymore and we, we need to find a way of doing that. We need the support of the system to enforce that.
Max, you get some more questions? Uh, John Blodgett, our apparently is on YouTube.
Okay.
I don't know what happened to him on Zoom, but uh, he was curious about what resources from the county and state law enforcement are you getting?
Uh, so I talk to Maine Drug quite a bit. Their shore staff as well, they're giving us what help we can, uh, we pass information back and forth. And um, yeah, and we're, it's not that we're not getting. Drug charges, I mean, we're charging people with drug possession quite frequently. We're still getting them, we're just, we're just not getting these big fish. We, cuz it takes more resources. Uh, Maine Drug would love to help us and is willing to help us. Once again, it's a big state, there, we don't have a local agent here, so they're, they've got an agent that fills in when he has time here.
And the law enforcement, as everybody knows, and if you've been watching the news, there is a. Definite shortage of throughout the state of Maine.
It's an understatement.
Anything else? Um, comments, just appreciating the work you are doing as well as just you doing the presentation tonight. Uh, and another comment on uh, reducing poverty is another great way of bringing down crime.
Reducing poverty is always the. It's why we have to have, that's why we were the first to have the community navigator program, it's, but it's, we have a lot.
And that's a chicken and the egg controversy because. The people who are doing drugs, that's a large part of the reason that they are, they have poverty, it's, it's not necessarily the other way around. One other thing, you, you said that roughly half the uh, the deaths that you investigated were drug related. That in itself ought to be a shocking statistic, you know? But the, the event that made me gasp was worse than a death. The issue is critical, it is just amazingly bad.
Yeah, and I don't think people can fathom it really, they really can't.
No, and some things we can't talk about, obviously.
Right.
Yeah, no, there's some bad things that happen in this town.
Yep, you really do. That's why you're here tonight. Anybody else get anything? Go, go ahead.
Is there a way to provide information to the town without harming any of the individuals involved? Even just the monthly statistics sheet?
Yeah, we can do, yeah.
That's what we're planning on doing, but specific instances are hard until they resolve. It's just a matter of, like Mike said, you know, we're privy to some things that we can't share unfortunately. And, and as a town manager, I have a whole nother life as like a mom and a grandparent. And, and a human and. Very few things, I've been doing this for almost thirty-nine years, very few things shocked me. I came from New Jersey, nothing really shocked. But I got sideswiped by the bucolic Maine life. And then, you know, on a day-to-day basis, I see what they do, I see what EMS does and. The eye-opening things recently that you, 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 you know, you see things on TV, you know, oh, is there, you know. Bad things happening a- and then it hits home, it, it's, it's eye-opening, you know, um. I never thought that as a town manager, I would have to get well-versed on sex trafficking. Or human trafficking. I, 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 that, to be very honest with you, that is something that I never thought would pass across my desk. Um, I've never, I just, that shocked me and this town.
It's a huge part of the drug world.
It's a huge, and, and that was such a rude awakening and maybe that's just me being naive, but. You know, when you can put a face to a victim, that, that affects you like. It's hard when you can put a face to a victim and it's happening in our community, the more awareness that. Comes from this, the better it is. And as more things develop, of course, we'll let everybody know, but we just. We have to be more aware of what's happening to our neighbors, to our family, to our friends and, and just be more aware. Of, of what's going on and, and really, resources is what we need, we need, we need resources and. And hopefully people will feel more comfortable about coming forward. That's, that's the other part of it is. You know, and I've heard this a couple of times, um, throughout my career here. When I first got here. It was, you know, people were afraid, well, we don't wanna come to the town office, you know. You know, we don't wanna do this, we don't wanna do that. We have an open door policy, we have a community navigation program. You know, we try to be very well aware of what's going on in the community. And um, you know, people, it should be viewed as a safe place to come if you need help because it is. And I hope people get that feeling, but the more information that's out there, I think the better it is, so. But yes, we're gonna get better at telling people what we do and what we're dealing with. We have to. You know, um, when I first got here, nobody wanted to talk about poverty. Poverty was like, you know, I was told by somebody, when I first got here, we don't talk about what our poverty level is. I think, you know, at a task, select board meeting, I was the one that says, we gotta deal with the problem we have and we have a poverty problem and. And, you know, that's when we started on down the community navigator program lane. Because we have to deal with the problems that we have and we have to figure out a way to get the resources to help and. Hopefully make an impact as best we can as a town.
Any else get any more questions for John? Just thank you, John, for coming on the line.
Thank you.
All right, moving along, there's no public Karens, any adjustments to the agenda? Seeing none. Citizens comments?
We have citizens, we're so excited.
Does anybody like to step up? Everybody all set?
This happens when citizens come, we get really excited.
All right, uh, select board comments, Bob?
I just have one, I watched and listened to Fleetwood Mac the other night, fantastic concert. God, concert, it was a testimonial to Fleetwood Mac, not the actual.
I thought you might've gone back in time.
Great music, great fun, great program, and they're gonna have a few more coming down the road, so support your Waldorf theater.
Will?
Um, I'll just touch base on that, Facebook came up, saw again today on one of the Waldeboro message boards, there was a lot of uh. Misinformation going around about certain things with the town. And I just encourage people to always go to the source for information rather than believe whatever's put on Facebook. Because things get twisted on there and you're better off to, to go right to Julie, um, or somebody else that with the town. And uh, the other thing is, I, I really talking about that, we definitely gotta do something about getting treatment. And I, I don't know if that's the state or whoever, but, but there's another layer to that, that's the ground layer, but then there's the next layer of, of the accountability. And he mentioned the deferred disposition and I see that every week in the paper. And some of the things are disturbing, DUIs that are just let down to misdemeanors and that scares me, having a family. That's driving on these roads, you know, that's, that's a real serious issue, so there's a lot to, to unwrap with all this. That's it for me.
Mike? Yep, I'm good.
Just a couple of things, budget time is here. Our first meeting is next Tuesday at six o'clock. Um, the budget books are done and out and everybody has picked up, so um, it's our budget book this year. Um, I encourage people to come to the meetings, I encourage you to watch the meetings. Um, it really is where a lot of decisions are made by the budget committee and the select board. That set the tone for how we proceed into the next year. Um, and I'll give you a preview, we're gonna be talking about staffing, staffing in EMS, staffing in the police department. Prices are going up, we're gonna talk about our capital program. Um, you know, we got good news about our fund balance, but we also haven't done a lot of work on our roads because we've had to cut some things, so. Um, there's a very nice list of roads that need to be paved um, in this budget document. Um, so it really sets the tone for how we proceed as a community, so it's a lot of fun. I know if you've had so much fun at this meeting, you might wanna come back for a budget meeting, um, but um, it really is. In my humble opinion, it is the most important meetings that, that the town has because it really does set the. What our goals are for the year and what we wanna accomplish. Um, so I just wanted to share that. I wanted to also um, address some misinformation. Um, so today, um, I don't. Um, often engage in Facebook. Uh, but I did see some information today relating to the camper ordinance. That the select board was presented by our co-enforcement officer. And one of the things that I, I wanna make very clear is that we are not creating new rules, we are enforcing rules that already exist. Through the state. And it's a codification of those rules and that was, if somebody had watched the meetings when Mark presented it, that is how. It was presented. But I want everybody to understand that everybody gets a bite at the apple, so even though. That ordinance is being proposed at a local level, it's codifying the state rules. Does that make sense to everybody? That's how Mark had explained it. There are still rules that exist that you can only be in a camper for so many days, you have to have a sanitary septic um, system. All of those are not Waldeboro-centric rules, they're state rules, but he was putting all the rules in one place. So that people were clear and could find them all in one spot in the book and be clear. We are aware there is a housing crisis. The town manager does not wanna go out and remove people from homes, that's not what I was hired to do. My goal since I've been here, and if anybody knows me, is to keep people in their homes. I'm very open about that, I'm very transparent about that, I've taken a lot of hits maybe for that at times. But, you know, I like to think that um, anybody can come in and ask me any question. Please come in, ask me questions, I love talking to people, I'm so excited, we have new faces here, I'm just, I wanna just take you into my office and say, so what do you think? Um, but never feel like you can't come here and talk to me, my door is always open, I'm here. Come in, see me, but you don't need an appointment, if I'm here, I've never turned anybody away. If you have a problem, fine. If you don't and you wanna say something nice, that's fine too, if you need to yell at me, go ahead. But please come and see us and I appreciate what you said so much today, Will, because, you know, it is. When I took this job seven years ago, I, I could have went to many different places. But I chose Waldeboro, I chose to be here, I chose this community because. It was and still is a very special place. I love the diversity of our community, I love that I never know who's gonna walk into my office and. We've come a long way in seven years and we still have a, a lot longer to go. And I wanna be a part of that, it's a, it's, it's, it really is a wonderful town, we have some difficult things we have to deal with. But we will only grow stronger through our adversity and, and that's all I have to say tonight. But thank you, Will, three words.
All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar, somebody like to make a motion to approve the consent count, oh, sorry, Max.
Quick question, full budget book is available?
It, it will be on Tuesday night, or, or Tuesday, probably, I'll try to get it on tomorrow. We're a little short-staffed in the town office, so that was one of the things I meant to do this week, but I haven't gotten to it yet. Or Thursday, I mean, I said Tuesday, didn't I? I will try to do it by Thur- by Thursday, sorry, by the end of this week.
Somebody like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar? Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right, on to new business, main water request for, to app, to apply for a grant.
So there is a federal rule now that all connections from the water system to someone's house. Has to be inspected for lead connections. As you know, technically, the water company is the town's, but we um, run it through our third-party main water. They were able to apply for a grant that would cover most of the cost of this, but it was time-sensitive. We just needed your blessing to say it's a good idea to apply for it. I support this wholeheartedly because it would cover the cost of having to literally go in and inspect each connection. In the town of Waldeboro if you're part of the water system, so that is something that is really important. And it would save rate payers from having to pay that rate.
Do you know how much this grant is valued at?
I um, believe they're applying for the full hundred and it would be around three hundred thousand, I believe.
Three hundred thousand.
I will confirm that and report at, back at the next meeting, but.
I was just curious.
I think they're covering up to eighty-five dollars of each connection. My math might be a little off, it's not three hundred.
It was fifty.
Yeah, it could be, it's fifty because, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I carried too many zeros. Sorry, it's. Ten to seven, I'm a little late, but I, I just need your blessing, I, you don't need, just to let you know that it's okay for us to apply.
Would somebody like to make a motion for that?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we endorse the uh, the grant application for lead service line inventory. From Maine.
And what will happen is, um, if it does, if, if it is found, you, there'll be new connections and everything made. It's not your entire line, it's just that connection from the end of the service into the home. I'm right about that, right?
That's correct, yes.
It's called a gooseneck.
Well, actually, the gooseneck is exempted, it still can be lead, but the lead pipes and there was one other. Um, material, I can't remember what it was.
Remember what it was.
Yeah, but, but there were a lot of lead services, um, Maine actually was in the forefront of banning lead piping. Back in the day, so it's expected that there will be zero in the public water system, but uh.
They have to, we have to.
The federal government has mandated this documentation. And, and a welcome change, they actually funded the, funded the mandate.
Which is a shocker.
Which is great.
All right, we have a motion. Alright, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion on it? Seeing none, all those in favor? Good, you're all set. Alright, budget update.
Our budget update, um as I've said before in my report, um that the budget is um updated. We have made um, we put all the requests in. I will tell you that our revenue um is up twenty-two point two-three percent. Um, in the um requested budgets. Um, and our expenditures unfortunately are also up. Um, and that number comes in at um eighteen point six nine percent. Which if we were to leave it as is, would result in a fourteen point four-eight percent. Cost in increase in potential taxes. The good news about that is these are the items that the select board and the budget committee will chat about. So these aren't carved in stone. These are the items, um just to give you an example. Um, public safety, the public safety budgets, and that includes EMS, fire and police are up nine point nine percent. Um, and we'll have extensive conversations about that because if you hear on the news. We're having difficulty hiring law enforcement officers. We have had two positions open. Um, for about two and a half years now. Um, for like I said, about half a day, we had full staff and then we had retirements. And uh of of one of our other officers um leave. So you know, and part of the problem is, is that Knox County Sheriff's Department raises their rates. Uh, Lincoln County raises their rates, then we have to raise ours. So um a lot of great discussion will come up um during the budget committee and the select board meetings for the budget. Because we'll talk about services, what is the level of service that um we want provided? And um what's great about the budget committee is it's a really unique um blending of the town. Um, because they're elected from all over essentially, just like the select board. But it really gives you a good feeling of different perspectives from the community. Other uh bus drivers, um community services. Um, we've gotten a lot of um requests from uh community servants agencies. Um, everybody of course is looking for um more money. And transfer station is up. Um, our share and the share for uh pushing and friendship. Again, tipping fees, huge increases in that, trucking fees for the garbage. Um, and that will also lead into what the transfer station committee is looking at now, which is pay as you throw for garbage disposal. Um, so that will be something that is talked about, I imagine quite a bit in the budget. Um, so that's kind of like an overview of where a lot of the class drivers are for. The operating budget, but a lot of the revenue resource sources, um. One of the things is for the first time, I think ever, well, at least in the last seven years. We actually know what to um anticipate for municipal revenue sharing, so that's up about seventy-six thousand dollars. Um, we also have increases in. Our anticipation for, if you'll recall, about two months ago, we did rate increases for EMS. As far as um what we could charge through Medicare, so we anticipated those increases. Um, interest, of course, interest rates are high on the borrowing side. Um, interest rates are also high on the savings side, so we've um also anticipated a slight increase in that. And um I did utilize more um of our fund balance. Um, as we learned um a couple of meetings ago, our fund balance is quite healthy. And how we proceed with that, another huge driver for the budget and those increases. Are our capital improvement fund and just to give you um a little idea. Our. Highway are. Highway, um. Surface paving reserve. In twenty twenty-three, we only budgeted two hundred and nineteen thousand. If you'll recall, we always used to budget five hundred thousand. Um, last year we knew we weren't going to um pave, so we cut it down to one fifty. I put in this year six hundred and fifty thousand and that's an increase of five hundred thousand and that is a way to use our. Fund balance to make sure that we get those roads paved. And um that would be Old Augusta Road, Eight Miles, Orse Corner, North Noble Borough Road, Mill, Elm Chapel, Castner, Simon, Burnham. Oak, Higher Reef, Cross Street and North Noble Borough Road. And everybody will appreciate it, because North Noble Borough is on the way to the transfer station. Um, but just so everybody's aware, those are the types of drivers. And um I'm sure we'll have a conversation about um relief of the mill rate with the also some of the fund balance. So um we are aware that the county, I believe their proposed budget was up a potential eight point five percent. Um, and I do not know uh or have an inkling yet of where the school will end up. So all good things that we will talk about when the budget is here. But and I just want to also point out that the budget books were out on time and I want to thank Tanya. Um, Blodgett for all of her hard work on this book and if you find a pot of gold, let me know. There is a little hidden pot of gold in here. Wanted to see who was closely reading everything we put together, so. That's it.
Alright, on to ten three. Set the date for public hearing for the land use ordinance change?
That's Max.
Nope, that's Max.
I I I should have actually been in here when you were guys adjusting the agenda. That's actually something the select board won't have to settle. That's uh something that the planning board can actually do in March. Um, I can talk about the ordinance changes if people would like me to kill a few minutes.
It's up to you. Are there significant changes?
Uh, no, most of the changes are going to be associated with LD two thousand three or clarifying some items. Uh, LD two thousand three is the housing legislation that the state passed a year or so ago. And uh a lot of towns have thought it is the uh overreach on uh home rule and all that. Waldorf was kind of ahead on a lot of the standards that the state is actually imposing. For example, accessory dwelling units, town has always allowed accessory apartments. I think the only difference we're going to have is just saying that uh someone wants to do an accessory apartment. It just has to be associated, it has to be tied to potable water and have sufficient septic system, which kind of a no brainer. At least that's my opinion. And the other part with the accessory dwelling unit is that it can be detached from the main building. So originally, it just had to be shared wall, it had to be in the building, but now if someone wanted to put a tiny home on their lot. They can do that with no restriction. That, well, still have to meet setback requirements, but again, seems pretty minor compared to everything else. We always allowed multiple dwelling units, principal dwelling units on a lot as long as they can meet the minimum lot size and other dimensional standards. So again, we were well ahead with the state saying you have to allow four units on a lot. We've allowed as many units as long as you have as, as long as you have a big enough lot size for it. So again, really no change for that. Um, the only big change is the affordable housing development item. And we allow multifamily almost everywhere and as we've experienced with Volunteers America, they're going to go where there is a sewer and water. So we're looking at sort of the village route one area. And. Really, that's the only big change we're going to be facing. The other ordinance items are just some complaints or some housekeeping items that Mark and I have kind of would like to address. It's the camper ordinance is not going to be included in that. I would like to stress that right now. Um, but this is talking about um some uses that probably weren't in there that we should have, like demolition. Technically, we need to have demolition on the lane use chart. Um, I think removing the one or two items that people have requested to remove. And then adding some standards. Again, this is all very boilerplate stuff. And I I just want to get ahead of the curve for LD two thousand three. When I say this helps us get in compliance, we're not really changing too much other than putting in some standards for housing. That's it.
Um, so you said the planning board?
Yeah, so. So because of my work, I have been mixing up a lot of dates and thought that we needed a thirty day notice. But actually, the planning board can just set a date and have a thirteen day public hearing notice, so.
Right at the planning board meeting?
Yeah, so the planning board can set up a time at their meeting, what works for them. I've I've been working on a lot of comp plans for other towns, so I'm really, I am zoned out on a few things now.
Okay, so I guess we don't have to worry about that.
Yep, you're all set for now.
Alright, good. Alright, Max. Anybody get any questions from Max before he runs off? Okay.
And I do, do you have a draft uh maybe in the in word with uh track changes or something? Do you have a draft of it?
I do, yeah, I do, and I can send, and I have it broken up by article as well, so I can send that out too.
That'd be great, thank you.
Alright, old business. Archaeology committee guidelines update.
I know this is like our favorite subject. So as I was doing the guidelines and I went through what was suggested by through the bylaws of what people have brought forward. I had a few questions, so I contacted the MMA. So I need some, a little bit more time to work with the group. Because some of what they anticipate doing that they thought they could keep private. Because they're a public committee, we have to. So one of their things was if somebody wanted, they wanted to dig an arche- uh on their land. And they did not want the general public to know that they were digging on their land. They can't discuss that in a public meeting. But they can't go into executive because the rules of executive session would not apply. Under the rules that typically govern a committee meeting. So there's a couple of little nuances they suggested and had some other questions that I did not know. Um, the answers to that I'll have to get back with the group of citizens who brought this before the board. Just to try to work out and iron out some of these little parameters of. How to go about this, just because I wanted to make sure we covered all of our bases. So that's where we are with the archaeological. I will update you hopefully at the next meeting, but I got a very lengthy email back. From the MMA legal department that I just have to run things by the citizens to make sure what their intent was. And then figure out how we can make that fit into a town.
Alright. HVAC update.
HVAC update. Um, they will be coming back on March twenty-third to finish their. They have to redo the calculations based on work that was done in the EMS side. So that they can properly size um the system. That is the one thing that they need to do. Um, they're not going to do the fireside, um as we discussed at the last time. But then I will have a working set of um RFP plans shortly thereafter. So that we can put out a RFP for the HVAC, but um I want to just thank the public works department. They did a great job of sealing everything up if they possibly could.
Has it made a difference?
Um, I will tell you, the women's room is a lot, lot warmer. It's not, it may not fix our problem with no air conditioning during the summer, but I can tell you it is a lot warmer in the women's room. Um, so I really would like to thank, and that was really Will and uh John Degel who did uh most of the work on that. I would like to thank them. I think the entire staff thanks for that.
Okay, that's it. Anything for the next meeting? For the agenda? Anybody get anything? Yeah.
Well, no, because I did not schedule any budget committee meetings when you had regular select board meetings. Well, it's a joint meeting, it's the first meeting, I have to say, but we on regularly schedule select board nights. Because what was happening is people were sitting through an hour, hour and a half select board meeting and then they had to work on numbers and. I should also say that that first night will have a wonderful, happy PowerPoint presentation with music. None of you get the happiness that I get for the budget. I nobody, I don't understand it. It's it's the most important thing we do. It's so exciting. I will make that, if that is a song choice, I will make that happen. But I, like I said, it really is an important thing and it is a really important job. Sorry.
Alright, I guess uh we'll adjourn the select board and go on to the Board of Assessors.
Oh, no, it was more important, so am I going to stop the recording and then restart it for the Board of Assessors or just keep it as one?
You can just keep it. And I'm going to leave so that Daryl can sit up here and be efficient.
Um, I can't remember who's the chair of the Board of Assessors.
I believe it's Mike.
No, it's Mike.
Oh, boy.
You are the man.
He's getting the paperwork just this moment. I apologize. I guess things got a little crazy last week.
Yes, yes, we heard. She's she's right across the road from me. Okay.
So the stuff was out there, but it didn't get to you.
Okay. So I guess we'll call to order and we have a quorum. Citizen comments? Regular meeting minutes, I haven't seen them.
You've signed them already. I usually get them. These meetings are so sparse. Get them right back to you. You've signed them. They're in the books. At the next meeting, we do.
Okay, alright. Alright, so abatements for personal property.
I'm sorry, I make a motion to approve the minutes from November fourteenth.
Discussion? All in favor?
Perfect.
So there are a few abatements that have come in, very few this year. Uh, next week is the deadline, I believe, to get them in. But um the first two are personal property. There was a one-five enterprise and a cornhole connections across the street. They never did file anything as to what was in there, but I assessed them for an estimated five thousand dollars and then they moved out of town. So recommend that we clean it up. That's where those are.
So you want a motion on that right now? I make a motion, we abate. Uh, seventy-eight dollars for twenty twenty-four dash fifteen and twenty twenty-four dash sixteen. At seventy-eight dollars. Second.
More discussion? All in favor? Abatements for real estate?
Real estate. Uh, the first one, Cheryl Lutz has a camper up off Lois Lane, which is up on two twenty. And somehow I measured it up with three tip outs, but that is not the case. There's only two.
What is a tip out?
A tip out is, comes out of the camper.
Okay.
So if you.
Oh, I see, it's an extension, so you can.
There is a photo in there that shows a looking, and I had somehow put three on that thing. Um, so it it amounts to a thousand dollars and would recommend the fifteen sixty.
Make that motion for twenty twenty-four dash seventeen to abate for fifteen dollars and sixty cents?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
The uh next one was up on Noise Road or up on um the pond, Washington Pond. On the backside. Madam. Washington Line. Um, when I repriced it, it was put in as a log home when it's actually log siding. And there were two cards because if you look at the photo, there's a house and then there's a cabin down on the lake. Madomic Pond. And we had a deck on the card one and the same deck on card two, so I had that on there twice. Uh, would recommend the seventeen thousand, I believe, that it, no, thirty-eight thousand made a difference there in value. Or five ninety-two.
I'll make that motion, uh twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash eighteen to abate five hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty cents.
Any more discussion?
Over here, yes.
Um, the last one, the Eaton's bought down on. Um, the last one, the Eaton's bought down on five eighty-three Friendship Road. Back in twenty twenty-two and paid five hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred. Um, it was graded as a C-one-ten and had a value of two hundred and fifty thousand. So it was increased to a B grade to have a value of five hundred and fifteen thousand. Um, it is not a B-grade home. I have gone through it with them. It's an average home, but that's the cost of an average home, okay, five hundred and twenty-five thousand. So we'd recommend that we go back to the. Um, C-plus-ten. They would like it valued at about two hundred and eighty thousand because that's the percentage of what a lot of properties are selling. They took the land and they only have seven tenths of an acre, and they took a lot with five acres and divided it. Square foot by square foot and came out with a percentage, but that's not the way land is valued. There's base law, there's improvements.
But you recommend, we recommend.
I would recommend.
Eleven hundred and seventy dollars.
Yeah.
All right, I'll make that motion, twenty twenty-four dash nineteen to abate eleven hundred and seventy dollars.
I'll second the motion.
Further discussion? All in favor?
And then there was a tree growth application put in on um two fifty-one Dutch Neck, which is on the corner down there, the area on the right. Um, it is twelve acre lot, so they do qualify. They do have the forest fan. Recommend it takes six thousand off the value. Same as that.
Okay. Just six thousand off the value. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I make a motion twenty fo- twenty-four dash one for tree growth, uh reduce the property value by six thousand.
Set the valuation or the tax?
The valuation.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
So that's what I have, unless you have questions for me.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Now.
I make a motion to adjourn for the slot board.
Second, that's true.
We're actually done before eight.
I do have the form if you want to.